I would like to call tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting to order. We're gonna start with old business in new. The first item was the approval of minutes from October tenth, two thousand twenty-four and November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. First have to decide who's gonna vote on that.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the meeting minutes are...
Did you exceed these?
Yeah, but I'm not gonna attend. That's the only thing on tonight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my client is... He was a client of mine, he's an abutter, so I'm not...
Roger that. No, I'm gonna leave. You, you...
The second item of old business in new is about to approve the two thousand twenty-five ZDA meeting schedule, which is second page for our packets noting meetings going forth from tonight, March thirteenth, April tenth, May eighth, June twelfth, July tenth, August fourteenth, September eleventh, October ninth, November thirteenth, and December eleventh.
Let's approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The published agenda included petition by the Bedford Street Church of Christ for a special permit. However, it's my understanding that they didn't post an ad of the public notice of that, so they're gonna be coming back next month, so that item will not be addressed at all tonight. I don't know if anyone's here to discuss that, but it's not gonna be discussed at all. The second item on the agenda is a petition by property owner Daniel Driscoll for a special permit under section one seventy-five dash twenty-one dot H two, three, and five for open lot storage of registered transport vehicles and trailers, open lot storage of registered trucks and trailers used for temporary storage, and open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with a commercial or industrial use. The property is located at eight ninety Bedford Street on Assessor's Map, fifty-two lot sixty-eight and sixty-nine in a highway commercial zone. Is someone here representing Mr. Driscoll? Would you please come up and just tell us what you'd like to do and...
Your name and your address too.
Yeah, your address, yep.
Good evening, chairperson and members of the zoning board. My name is Daniel Driscoll, and what do you need my address of what?
Yeah, the address.
The eight ninety Bedford Street, Abington, Mass.
Well, the address of your business, if it's different than the address of the petition.
Oh, it's twenty-six Church Street, Whitman, Mass.
Okay.
Basically, requesting a special permit for open lot storage of registered vehicles and trailers, open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with the business. So basically, what's gonna go there is small dumpsters, box truck, and a couple of dump trucks that pick up the small roll-off containers. There is a two-family building on the property with this sufficient packing for both units of front, if not more. The whole lot in the back is fenced off, and it is gated and locked all the time. Again, the back area is fenced off, and the property is locked all the time. What's gonna go back there is six small roll-off containers and possibly three trucks, one a box truck and maybe two trucks that do the roll-offs system. So basically, when a customer calls me, I proceed to eight ninety Bedford Street, I pick up the truck, I pick up a container, we go to the customer's house, we take their trash, junk. We do not do food, we do not hazardous, we don't do paint, we don't do mattresses, we don't do nothing like that, just like, one, I haven't got junk, we just take stuff from the house. Once we fill the dumpster up, we go to a recycling plant down Brockton, Trojan, we dump the material there or the product, we bring back the truck, we park it at Abington, eight ninety Bedford Street, basically, short and sweet. We don't do that, it's not a nine-to-five job. Honestly, I probably go there once, maybe three times a month. And we go, we don't go on Sundays, we don't go early in the morning, we don't go after five, which is pretty quiet back there.
Any questions for Mr. Driscoll?
We did get some pictures here, I don't know where they came from, from the bill inspector, correct?
Yeah.
There are already dumpsters on the property now, correct?
Correct.
And is this, is this the house that's there, or... Is that the house that's there? You taking that, are you tearing it down, or...
That's not, this is not me.
It's not you?
Maybe I, we were missing the former, but...
Hold on, see. Those are your dumpsters?
That's not me.
That's not you? Is this your dumpster?
The whole pictures are from me.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Those, those are my dumpsters. I don't own, I don't own a blue dumpster.
Okay, so you have the boats back there too?
This is, this is like, this is like, this is like four, five years ago.
Okay.
These are gone, these have been gone since then. This dumpster actually, if this is going back, this is when I first bought the property.
Okay.
Whoever owned it before me, I had to take three thirty-otters of trash out of there before I bought it, so that could be...
And that's what that looked like there?
That would be...
Does it look like that now?
That was one of my, I did do that, that was two years ago, I got a complaint, I cleaned it all up. So this... That, that, yes. This, I have no idea.
Okay, very good.
Those I don't...
Very good, so those are definitely...
Just wanna make sure we have, you know, the...
Yeah, those, I don't know where those are from.
But we'll, we'll, we'll address that.
Yeah, we'll address that after. But these, these members of all... One thing about this is today, we didn't get our packets with a lot of information.
Like what kind?
Until today.
Okay.
It's not your fault.
Yep.
It's something that's going on in the town.
All right.
So, bear with us.
That's all right.
And I just wanna show you those and just see where we stood on that, and we'll talk later, whoever spoke up. So... So there are definitely trucks that bring in dumpsters and bring out dumpsters, correct?
Correct.
And do you have a sidewalk, or do you have a driveway that's coming along, or...
It has a specific, I have it all pitched on the USB drive, but I, no one told me I should bring a laptop, so I...
Again, I can tell you right now...
No one told me that.
Another reason that's gonna turn over here.
Correct. But I have a separate...
Usually, we would use these.
Right, I have a separate driveway that goes right to the gate that goes in the backyard.
So you're not going over curb, you're not going over anything like that?
It's its own little drive-in.
The house that's there, what is that?
It's a two-family, one bedroom and...
Do people live in it?
Yes. The whole backyard is fenced off, they have their own private backyard, it's all fenced off, they have no access to that area at all.
So is there only gonna be empty dumpsters there?
Only empty dumpsters. Periodically, I do get, that was a, I was, I admit, I had some health issues, so I dragged my feet on that. I've resolved it as soon as I got the complaint. But as of now, the dumpsters are empty. Periodically, I do get metals, I have other rentals, I take refrigerators, whatever, I just throw it in a dumpster and I leave it there till it's filled, and I, one dumpster, I'll dump it at the scrapyard. Otherwise, there is no food, there's no hazardous waste, I don't take that stuff, I don't take any chemicals, mattresses. And again, I don't bring it back there, I pretty much, once we're done with the job, we go dump it at Trojan, and then we bring it back there and keep it contained.
So the town has regulations concerning dumpsters, you in compliance with all those?
Yes. The Board of Health, I've been dealing with them, a couple of scenarios, I did, I have to admit, I did kinda get a little lazy, I did, as soon as I got the complaint, I cleaned it up.
So you have all the necessary permits and everything from the Board of Health for the dumpsters?
Yes.
So I think, is there a question from the bill inspector saying that didn't notify, sir?
Well, I think there, the town has received some complaints about you. Abutters are supposed to be notified within three hundred feet, and the town notified people, but it, there's a question about whether they notified enough surrounding abutters, and that's something we should talk about.
Yep.
Before we take on comments from the public, but we wanted to hear what you were planning to do.
I had no other, no, since I've been there, never had a complaint. No one ever confronted me about anything. We're quiet, we keep clean, the property's mowed all the time, and whatever, we plow it, and that's all. I just, the reason we're here, we have one, we have one abutter that's, he's complaining, that's why we're here.
So, you know, you described to us why you want a special permit.
Mm-hmm. The land is municipal zoned, technically, I mean, I know there's two family on it, but it's municipal zoned. I mean, if I knock down the house, that two-family, I could put a McDonald's there or a Walmart, but I keep it low profile, I keep it to myself.
And you've gotten the, the permits from the Health Department, if you haven't heard otherwise.
Yes, again, they're empty dumpsters, there's no, I mean, I went to Board of Health, they know everything, I, permits, whatever I needed, I got.
Okay. Do we have any further questions for Mr. Driscoll before we move on to the comments from the public and what we should do about it?
Well, I was just wondering, we should move forward if we don't, we always show someone near the building inspector to let us know what they're talking about.
Right.
What, what was the question? I might be able to answer it, I know I'm not...
It's a question about abutters, like, I think it isn't directly related to you, it's how your abutters were notified, and we may have to re-notify abutters before we can do anything.
They were mailed, right, I did that, we mailed them all out.
You did it according to what...
Okay, I'm just checking.
As my understanding, but we have to discuss amongst ourselves the potential issue that not enough of your abutters were notified based on what the town says it will do.
I got you.
Okay, so if there's no more questions for Mr. Driscoll, I'd like to bring it back to the board to talk about the issue of whether enough abutters have, abutters have been notified in order for us to hear this discussion any further tonight. This is a, you guys got this map in your packet that we just got, right? And my understanding is that three hundred feet is like, outlined in a circle, and a number of properties, you know, fall within that three hundred-foot circle that were not notified. And the town follows what Massachusetts requires for abutters, but somehow, a three hundred-foot thing didn't seem to carry through. I know that Town Council was engaged, and I guess we were encouraged to perhaps err on the side of caution, maybe vessels. But we have to decide whether we need to have the abutters notified from this map, which shows everyone that would abut in any, to any degree within three hundred feet of the property. That was my understanding from...
Yeah, exactly what it says.
Right. And probably should discuss...
Continually.
Continuation, so we know what you're proposing for a special permit. There's been an issue brought forward by the public and the Building Department, and we have to decide whether we can move forward tonight or, or vote to continue it until we can address the abutters appropriately. And I think the, my understanding is the communication with Town Council was informal. There's no, there's no correspondence, only the discussion I had with, based on that, whatever conversation that Nick from the Building Department had with AB.
So what it says there is we have two complaints of people...
Right.
That weren't notified at all.
Right.
So legally, we probably really shouldn't continue.
Right.
We should hold off till next meeting to...
Right.
Discuss.
Well, I, I mean, the issue I see with that is we've already opened it, so we have people here who wanna speak, and we could re-notice it for next week, continue it to next week, but it makes no sense to...
But people, but people have their say.
Exactly.
So that we follow the full protocol for meetings, and even if we continue the discussion until next month, we've still opened a meeting, and we can hear what people have to say.
Exactly, the people were here, and then if we re-notice people, then, yeah.
Well...
Okay.
As long as we understand that we were not gonna, you know, make a decision tonight.
Right.
Because legally, we don't wanna mess this up.
No.
If you wanna continue, I mean...
Andy, do you have any thoughts on this, or you can't?
I'm not gonna take back this one.
Well, Andy, you needed your one.
Okay, you have an abutter...
Actually, I have two, when I look at, when I look at the other complaint list, I see that I have two.
Okay, okay.
You know too many people, man.
About politician.
Not really.
Even if we choose to continue, which it seems like we will, I still think we should let people come up and have their say about...
You're the boss.
So, it's good. So, Mr. Driscoll, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I would invite anyone who wants to come up and speak, and they're seen to come up, give us your name and address and what you have to say, and we'll vote from there.
Mike Kiki, eight seventy-four Bedford Street, I'm the largest abutter of this property, and I think the expansion that you said should go out even further, because this is looking like it's gonna be a transfer station.
Right.
So before we go forward with the meeting, I think it should be postponed, and I think it should be talked over with the town officials to see if it has to be expanded to be a transfer station. Because I think it does, I think it's supposed to be a special town meeting for the town.
Okay. And that's...
Want to say more? I mean, these are your pictures, correct?
Those are my pictures, yes.
Okay, no, okay.
There are pictures there that don't show his property, but that's the company of the dumpsters.
Okay.
The company, the dumpsters own his tags on the side of it.
Okay.
And I Googled that company, and it's from Mashpee, Mass.
Do you wanna tell us about what your experience is right now?
Oh, I've been, I've been fighting with this for four or five years.
You wanna explain it to us?
Yes, the stuff would come, the debris, I would complain, the Board of Health would issue them to get it off, as well as the fire, because there was propane tanks there, there was all kinds of debris, you see the pictures. And then it would come back again, and then I would complain, and then it would be moved off the property again, and it's been a constant thing back and forth. I never had rodents for thirty years, and now I have rodents. Now he has dumpsters there, roll-off dumpsters, not just only dumpsters, he has trucks, he has trailers, he has all kinds of stuff there. I've been there for thirty years, it's been residential. The only commercial property is the mobile, that's the only commercial property in that whole block.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. It is highway commercial, though.
Excuse me?
Pretty sure it's highway commercial.
It is highway commercial, but it's...
But they're residential.
Residential, right.
Right, and it's been used in his residential. He doesn't live on the property, so he doesn't have to deal with it. He doesn't deal with the smells, the rats, the rodents, the noise. There's a truck when it backs up, it's beep, 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 because it's a commercial truck with the roll-off dumpsters. So... If you have any questions, I mean, in the dumpster regulations, it's supposed to be on hot surface, it's not on hot surface, it's put in the backyard. I'm afraid of contaminants on my property, running into my property, so there's a lot of issues. I put up a seven-foot fence all along my property line, because I didn't wanna look at it, it was an eyesore. But I still gotta deal with the rodents, the noise, and all the debris that I can see still from my property.
It seems like some of the issues you're bringing up, well, you know, have to be dealt with through the Health, Board of Health, because they have to do with the permits, he has what he's allowed to do on that property.
And it sounds like you've done that, right?
Right.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, and so, but it's their job to enforce those.
Right.
We're not allowed to. But special permits, we can put conditions on at some point, we'll have to discuss that if we decide to move forward with...
Hasn't been a site plan, traffic study, an impact of all the abutters, nothing's been done.
Right.
And that's what we're gonna have to deal with. Right now, if you guys approve that, we're gonna have to deal with it. We're stuck with it. It's gonna bring down the property's value, being next to a transfer station. They tried to put one of these up in Route eighteen, and the town voted it up. And that was a bigger problem, that was six acres.
Right. Okay. Do we have any more questions?
So about how many years have you been having this issue?
Four or five years.
Four or five. How many complaints have you filed with the town? I mean, I...
Probably four or five.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much, and is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to come up and speak? Please let us...
I have two letters from the audience, too.
Okay.
Were these the...
No, these are different ones.
Were these the individuals who couldn't be here tonight, or...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right, we'll, we'll make sure we get that in the record.
How are you doing?
My name's Sean Flaherty, I live at twenty-seven Temple Street, it's right behind this proposed stuff. He said it's all fenced in. I just checked with my wife, I think the chain-link fence is pretty worn down. I think a tree has fallen on one of the, you know, supporting top bars, so I don't know how well the fence has to be, but it's, it's, it needs to be replaced. And as far as the noise and stuff, it, it hasn't even started, but there are days in the summer when we're on our porch, we hear them out in the back, or... So I just, that's all I wanted to say, is that I agree with, if it's gonna be a transfer station, then it needs to be expanded to a lot more abutters. I personally don't remember getting a letter, it's all from my neighbor here that's been telling me about all this stuff in the meeting today, so...
You live, you live where?
Twenty-seven Temple Street, I'm right behind it.
Right behind it? You didn't get one?
Did we?
Oh, okay, all right.
Can you see into the property from your...
Yeah.
Have you experienced any of the same issues that the gentleman just described?
Yeah, it's just, it's an eyesore. I mean, the summer kinda gets foliageed up, you don't really notice it as much, but... The fence thing was a big, I don't, I don't think the fence is really that...
Any issues with trash actually being stored on-site?
Uh, I wouldn't...
You prefer it?
Well, I mean...
As far as, all that is out there right now is the dumpsters. I don't know, I can't see into them, I don't think there's anything on the road.
Any issues with rodents or anything like that?
Uh, I saw a rat one day from my kitchen window, and my neighbor, Ernestine, who wasn't here tonight, she had rat traps put out, so I'm not sure where that was coming from, but...
Have you ever raised any concerns with the town, like the Board of Health or anything?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak?
If they're all done, anybody else here?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not...
Please, please repeat your names.
Dan Driscoll, eight four eight ninety Bedford Street. I wanna specify, I'm not gonna open up a transfer station, I'm just a small guy. I got five dumpsters, I'm pretty much almost semi-retired, I'm not gonna open up a transfer station. Rats, I'm sorry, we have Trucci that's right there. I don't do food in my dumpsters. I don't know where rats are, I don't know, everyone has rats. Trucci's is right there, so that's that. The dumpster name, I buy used dumpsters on Facebook, the names are, one, one trailer has a name on it, I just gotta scrape it off. So I'm not associated with whatever that Mashpee dumpster is or anything like that. Again, my dumpsters are empty, I know those pitches, those are from five years ago, I had some boats there, it's all cleaned up, it's been cleaned up for almost two years now. There's five dumpsters there, barely any trucks, there's two trucks, and him, him beep, but I, we're never there. He works for me. When did we go to that property?
Going to some, once in the morning, once in the afternoon.
That, no, that was, that was for a pickup truck, that's for a pickup truck. I don't run the trucks daily, we do a clean-out maybe once every two weeks. So the noise about beeping, I don't know where he's getting that. Uh, the noise is minimum, is dog box more than my truck's big noise. Trojan, I mean, Trucci makes more noise, the gas station, the car wash makes more noise than what I do there. I have tenants there, I respect my tenants, so that's why we keep a low profile. So, so just wanna be clarified on that. Again, I'm not looking to get bigger, I'm happy where I am right now, so...
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to entertain a motion to close discussion from the public.
We can't close it, because we need to continue it.
Oh, yes, right, right.
I'm about to give this, yeah?
Okay.
This is from the city of Mass on the vehicles, to the dumpsters. That's the owner of the truck and the dumpsters there.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
All the trucks and trailers are addressed to me, I already gave you this information, but...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, again, we think, close it to the floor, because we may have to...
Right, close it, so I guess our next discussion then is whether we need to continue this solely due to the abutter notification question before we can move forward with forward discussion or any action.
My only question is, do we have to, we have to agree with...
Right. Right, we have to agree to a continuance.
Because if we do vote on it, it's not a challenge, so I mean, it's...
Right, because then people could lodge a complaint, kind of stuck. Would you entertain a continuation on this to address the abutter issue?
I haven't, I don't have a problem, I mean, what are my options? Either extend it, or can I vote, which you said you can't vote in there, so...
Well, we could vote, but then, you know, if somebody files a complaint, it'll go through a legal process.
That they weren't notified, so...
Yeah, it's something we...
It's not all over yet.
Yeah, so it's one way or another, it's likely to, you know, draw out. It's my, my opinion, it's only my opinion. Okay. All right, thank you.
So when was that, when was that meeting?
What's that?
The date.
Oh, it's, it's March thirteenth, because it's twenty-eight days this, this month.
This one, actually.
Yeah.
Who's sending out the actual notices, the revised notices to the additional abutters? The town?
The town's got a dumpster, I don't know.
It's March thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah, March thirteenth.
Very good.
But would that allow enough time for abutters to be notified for this, if we give them a month?
Should.
Yeah. Should, right? All right.
And of course, the building department already knows about it, so it's all...
Right, yeah.
It's time.
Right. I don't, it seems to me like we...
Fourteen days for abutters.
Right. So if we, if we decide to continue, we tell the Buildings Office they can proceed with whatever they need to do with the abutters so that we, we have the proper, proper notification to make a decision.
Correct.
I don't know if we necessarily need a... extension, we have to make a decision within ninety days on a special permit of the public hearing, so he doesn't need to agree to a continuance, we have a little bit of wiggle room in there, but if, I think if we go beyond the ninety days...
Yeah.
Then we need to request his continuance, otherwise it's deemed approved if we haven't acted on it.
Right.
So today's the public hearing.
Right, so we have ninety days from a public hearing?
Yeah.
You should agree to it, though.
Yeah, that's...
To the next meeting. Continue it to the next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's, that would...
That would just cover all angles.
Right. So if that didn't work, if we have to continue it again, we could, we could do it again a couple times, right? Or at least once more? If this isn't resolved at the next meeting, if we get a continuance, we have to continue it again, it's still be within the ninety-day window?
Correct. Yep.
So I do agree that, you know, having a continuance here would be a good idea to get parties to agree to that so that we can discuss this with a proper abutter notification. The only other question would be if, if Mr. Driscoll's has gotten his Health Department things in there, there are people who enforce that, the determination of whether it's a transfer station or not would fall on, on the Board of Health and not us. And that would, that'd be a whole different thing, and so far, they haven't done that. As far as we know. You would have heard about that, but think...
Maybe we can ask the zoning office, it'll be here next month, and get an update from the Board of Health to make sure...
We have one, so...
Well, somebody...
We don't have anyone from the zoning, the bill inspector.
Yeah, Nick has been doing it, you know, half...
You're gonna hire someone?
That's their plan, but I don't, I don't know more than that. Inquire, it didn't get anywhere.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. But I do think no matter what is going on in the town office, we need to continue this, I think, is my opinion.
I'll, I'll second that.
Well, I think, one of you guys has to...
I'll make a motion to continue the petition of, of, where am I looking? Sorry, eight ninety, eight ninety Bedford Street on Assessor's Map, fifty-two lot sixty-eight and sixty-nine, for a special permit under one seventy-five twenty-one H two, three, and five until the meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So... All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll, the, we don't have anyone from the Buildings Department here tonight, they will contact you to sign a continuation agreement, I think, of some sort, it's a one-page thing.
I got one if you want.
You do? Oh, you do?
Wow.
Mr. Prepared over there.
Lawyers.
You should fill that out and...
Yeah, I can fill it out.
Yeah.
I don't, do I fill it out, I can give it to him tomorrow?
You can fill it out now, give it to, uh.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta bring these letters to the.
We can drop it off in the mailbox.
Tomorrow.
You can leave it up in the mailboxes, right?
Right. Yeah, I think I'm gonna leave this for Nick too.
Alright, so anybody who's here tonight who's already noticed, the first time, you won't receive a subsequent notice, so just keep in mind that we're gonna continue this to next month.
Right, but the meeting date will be March thirteenth, is what, and what's? Yeah.
Is he getting first?
I would assume so.
Requesting first?
We, we, we can request it, usually when things are continued, those are the first things we address, unless there's some.
No. We know we were, that's fine. There's not any developments, that's fine, I think that's fine.
Um, the um, I noticed, well, I guess we'd have to, you'd have to inquire with the, the Board of Health. Because I, I know that there was a, a letter from the zoning. Um board here saying that a property owner was. Needed to get a special permit in order to do what he wanted to do, and that's what he's requesting. Uh I, but what he's doing between now and the next meeting, that's up to the Board of Health to enforce.
See, we didn't, we, we didn't hear anything about that, Troy.
Neither.
I had no information on that.
The um. Alright, let's see, from this packet we got. Alright, um.
Again, we're in transition here, we don't have.
No, I don't see the.
Our usual people. Building Inspector.
Alright, um, right. So I don't know how to answer your question straight away, but I think that between now and then, the Building Department um. And it would have to address any ongoing operation. And then permitting for the use of dumpsters is, is the Board of Health, I believe, so they're unfortunately two different paths. Or fortunately. Right.
Uh, we don't have that. So we're uh.
So, I think we're good, um before we do that, I thought we had a copy of that letter, honestly?
We do, yeah.
Right, you have it there?
It's in the packet, yeah, it's the last item in the packet.
Is it?
Yeah, I think I took this packet apart, and that's my problem.
Me too.
Might be at the bottom of my pile here.
Basically, just said thirty days to get in compliance, which I'm assuming would be filing the request for the special permit, so. But it doesn't indicate, at least on here, that he has to cease and desist until it's granted, although it would be a continuing violation, or. I guess it's a potential violation, so.
Oh, there it is right here.
That's the problem, we get paperwork. That was in the other packet, or was it?
That was the one we got tonight. When we got tonight. So, alright, I don't wanna continue with any further confusion.
Right, yep.
We agreed to a continuance. And. We will bring this matter up again next month on March thirteenth, seven o'clock. Um and then entertain a motion to adjourn. Alright, well, somebody had to.
Motion adjourn.
A second?
On favor?